Evening, everyone. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the school committee. Could we all please rise? Begin the meeting by saluting our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Mayor Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Gendron?
Here.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Here.
Seven present.
Seven present. We'll begin the meeting with the first item on the agenda. We have minutes from approval of minutes for the regularly scheduled school committee meeting, last meeting of Wednesday, January 21st. Questions on these minutes? Entain a motion to approve by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Scott. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. And the opposed, that motion carries, the minutes are accepted and placed on file. Next section of the agenda, we have permission to enter. Permission to enter is of February 4th, 2015. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Elliott. To Kathleen Barry and the amount of $6,000 to provide staff training to special education teachers on how to utilize specific educational reading and writing programming and evaluation instruments for special education students. Funding will be provided by the school department budget, special education program improvement grant.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Questions on this? Motion to approve by Ms. Rossikowicz, second by Mr. Gendron. Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Moving on to the next section of the agenda, we have memorials. We have two memorials this evening. The first one is for Jeanne E. Cullen McCosker, retired Bailey School teacher and wife of student support service specialist Fred McCosker. Second memorial is for Stephen L. Jarvis, senior, father of Lowell High School Department Chair for Foreign Languages, ELL, Stephen Jarvis. Could we all please rise for a moment of silence and we'll darken chambers. May they rest in peace. First motion of the evening, oh, I would request, Ms. Martin, if you could come to the, take the chair.
The chair recognizes the mayor for the first motion. Requesting that the school committee vote to delegate full authority to city manager, superintendent of schools, and labor attorney to negotiate collective bargaining agreements with school department employee unions for ratification by school committee. Mr. Mayor.
Need a second? Second, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So I know we've had discussions in executive session on this on more than one occasion, but I wanted, I thought it was important to file this motion to let the public know and perhaps even the union know, teachers and other administrators and people that work for the school department about this vote. And the purpose and the reason for filing this motion is, to me, the current pace of the contract negotiations, to me, have been kind of productive. I think the process in place has been used for, I don't know, since I have been here, certainly, this is my first time of actually participating in the negotiation process, but more often than not, it seems to end up in mediation. It seems that the process is archaic, it's inefficient, and we just need to take a look at how to do things better. Negotiating these contracts is very time consuming, they're very complex. This document is upwards around 60 pages. The requests for changes to negotiate are, you know, they're multiple pages. One, certainly, and let me just say at the outset, this school committee works tirelessly. If you look at all the subcommittee meetings that are held and members attend, in addition to visiting schools and doing research on issues, the tireless work is, I just want to say, so it's not a matter of not wanting to do the work, in my opinion. It's a matter of how can we put a process in place that's more efficient. We all work, six of the seven members work, most of them have children, so to do what I would consider due diligence and justice to the process, I think we need to take a look at doing it a little bit differently. So I think one of the more frustrating aspects or disconcerting issues when it comes to negotiations are, we have been, we have been working, we have been meeting, trying to get all of us in the same room on multiple nights to have discussions and then let the process go back to, you know, to the other party, and the exchange is slow. I can understand the frustration from teachers and administrators and other unions that don't see progress, they don't know what is going on behind the scenes. So I just took a look at it and said, what happens on the city side? We're not, we are not giving up our responsibility. We do have the responsibility for ratifying this contract, and if we don't like it, we don't support it, just similar to the city side. And that's where I came up with the notion that let's try to do something a little bit differently, because what is in place, to me, is not working, and it's counterproductive. The same teachers, the same administrators that we value, that we sit and give credit here, week after week, for the very good work that's being done in the schools, creates almost an adversarial relationship, in my opinion. And we don't want to be there. I know the teachers and the employees in the school department don't want to be there, but I think there are misrepresentations on both sides. So it's not a blame game, it's how can we both work? How can we put something in place that will benefit, will be more efficient? The leaders that we hire, the managers who are responsible for implementing contracts and decisions and policy should be at the table, and I feel that having the superintendent of schools who knows the curriculum, who knows the issues that need to be addressed from a language perspective, the city manager who knows the financial issues of the city, having those two individuals, along with labor counsel who knows labor law, it's a good trio who can work and spend the time and meet, and put, you know, meet time and time again and have the exchange of ideas and have the information to know what is best for the school system, what is best for the children going to the school system, how can we make the school system better? I personally feel that these individuals, and on the other side, what can we afford? What can the city afford? How do we balance all of the other interests that we have, not only in the school district, but throughout the city? Those three individuals are capable, they have delegated, they have the authority to do it, all we have to do is, you know, vote to give them the authority, they have the knowledge, let me correct myself, they don't have the authority unless we give it to them. So I don't want to belabor the issue, because I know we've had discussion in executive session, I just want to let the public know what my thought was to put a better system in place, it'll be more efficient, and the exchange of information between the union and our city officials will be fluent, to me, it'll be timely, and it'll be a better process rather than teachers, administrators, custodians, clerks, everybody hearing, you know, information secondhand, and same thing on our side. So that, you know, that's my logic, that my thought for bringing this forward, and I hope my colleagues give it consideration. If it doesn't work, you know, more often than not, this long drawn out process, it's sluggish, it's, to me, it's unproductive, and it typically ends up in mediation, where we have a third party that has to come in and work with two parties to bring them to the table and come with an understanding. I think we're better than that, I think that we can empower our leaders who have our best interest in the district and the city to bring an agreement to this school committee, just like we do on the city side. Fire, police, DPW, you know, the list goes on and on, wastewater, they come, and we may not all agree on every little item in the contract, but at the end of the day, is it good for the district, is it good for the taxpayers? And that's why I think this process will be better. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Gendron.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, Ms. Vice Chair, I don't know what the appropriate title is, but we'll go with that. So I can, I can respect the reasoning behind the motion. My question is, do we really have, is it legal for us to abdicate this authority? I mean, state law, it's different than the city side, right? The city side gives the authority to the chief executive to negotiate union contracts, but state law clearly states that the school committees in this state have the legal right and authority to negotiate this union contract. So I don't know that, you know, I think we've already put the trio together and asked them to help us make headway on this process. I don't know that we actually can delegate full authority to these people to negotiate the contract. So I guess through you, Madam Vice Chair, to the superintendent, do you have any thoughts on that? Is this something that we can legally do?
I did speak to city solicitor Christine O'Connor this afternoon, and she advised me to say that if a motion like this was accepted by the committee, that it was legally sound. She said it might not be past practice, but as far as the authority, of course, it still has to always go back for approval and ratification of the committee, but we can, on behalf of the committee, it could be set up like that, it depends on your decision this evening. So according to Christine O'Connor, that's the information she gave me today.
If I may, she is here in the building, I did ask the city manager to have her attend to state exactly what the superintendent did just reflect, so I just sent her a text, she is here, I just saw her car, and she had every intent on coming to this meeting, I'm not sure if she realized the motion was going to come up so quickly, so she said she's going to be right down, so perhaps she can answer.
In the meantime, Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, I think it certainly is an interesting, interesting motion. I certainly have been involved with both sides of that fence for over four decades as a teacher in Unit A, administrator in Unit B, and now as a school committee individual. I will tell you that it has been frustrating. It's been frustrating, I think, for both sides, and I have seen both sides. And it's a very lengthy process, we've gone through it time and time again, and again, I think it does get some hot feelings, and I don't think on either side, it is meant to be adversarial, but I think at times it does get to that point. I think my attitude is that as long as we are able to ratify the final contract, and it's my understanding that the ratification, as my colleague said here, it is the, it's the law that we, as school committee people, have to sign off on it, and I definitely agree. I think the, where the cloudy area might be is who starts to, you know, can we give permission to someone to do some negotiation, negotiations on this? As far as I know, I believe we can, as long as we are the ones that are ratifying the contract at the end. And again, I think we've tried things, you know, why not try something different? If it doesn't work, then fine, go back to the way it was. But anyway, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Leary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess, one, I'll support the motion, but I want to, one, put a good word in for mediation. I don't think mediation is a bad thing, I think the context that we're talking about, mediation is a very positive thing. All the contracts that I've been negotiating while sitting as a member of this board have gone to mediation, and they've been very beneficial, and the reasons why we go to mediation, because you have two sets of very, very high skilled negotiators, if you will, meaning the school committee and the union, who are very adept and talented enough to represent their cause, and sometimes you need someone to get in the room and really point out where a deal can be made. I'll try a different approach, I think, you know, I've always said I support that as we've gone through the years, and I think it's not a bad thing to do. I do see this, however, at some point going to mediation, and I do not look at that as a negative result. I think that's a, shows that there's a way to get this done and resolved. The second thing that I'll say is, and this is very important and doesn't get enough feedback, because people kind of ignore it, is that every contract gets resolved. Well, everyone that I've been, has been resolved, and both parties going through some challenges through that process. I've always had a very good working relationship with the union, and after the process is over, I'm sure I will continue to have a very good working relationship with the union. That doesn't mean I agree with everything that they do, and that doesn't mean that they agree with everything that I do, because what we do is we treat it as being a professional. We stand by our opinions, we argue them passionately, and we find common ground. And every contract that I've been involved in, common ground has been achieved. So a lot of the drama and a lot of the anxiety and a lot of the energy, one thing I would point out is that every contract gets resolved, and this one will too. And both parties will, again, at that point, go back to what we both really are doing, is representing the kids and educating the kids in our community. So I will, I appreciate doing something different, I think that's a good thing to do. I don't think we abdicate the authority. I do see the road going down no different, but if I'm wrong, then, you know, it's not a bad thing to be wrong if we get a contract done quicker. I think that, at the end of the day, that saves a lot of time for both sides, so we can do what we mutually agree upon, is helping our kids. So I'll leave it at that and definitely support it, but want to, you got to understand that all these contracts do get resolved, and a lot of the drama is just a lot of wasted energy. Thank you.
Yep, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up, whatever it takes to get a contract done is the ultimate goal, and knowing where we are in the process and to me where, you know, the issues that have to be settled, discussed, negotiated, again, that's one of the reasons why I thought I'd move forward. And secondly, you know, we had teachers outside here picketing a few weeks ago, that, you know, that, I don't, that's not the message I think we want to send the people in the city, nor do we want our teachers getting to the point where they're frustrated, we want them in the classroom, we want them to be teaching, we want them to be focused, and I don't blame them, quite frankly, they're, you know, they're working without a contract, they're many, many months into it, and I can understand their frustration, as well as, you know, then there are other unions that we still have to work with as well. So I don't know if this is going to work, maybe it won't, maybe it will end up in mediation, but I appreciate, Mr. Leary, you thought that, and that's sort of where I was coming from, let's try it. If it doesn't work, you know, there's, the discussions are still taking place with the unions, hopefully they've made some, you know, some progress with last week, and, you know, having three people that know the issues, know the finances, know the, you know, know the collective bargaining laws at the table versus seven of us, and I'll just speak for myself, because I've not been through this, I don't think it's the best scenario, if you will, we still have the ultimate responsibility of either approving or not approving or sending it back to this, you know, to the committee, if it doesn't work, or, but, you know, let's try it, let's see if it'll, you know, make things better. Thank you. And I'm wondering if the solicitor is here, thank you, Madam Solicitor, for joining us. Mr. Gendron had asked the question of the legal nature of whether we can delegate authority to the manager, superintendent, and legal counsel to negotiate with the unions and then bring back an agreement to the committee for, you know, full ratification. So thank you for coming tonight.
Sure. The, as far as the power to delegate implicit in the authority given to the school committee would be the power to delegate all or some of the authority given to you to delegate. The committee would be the public employer for purposes of collective bargaining under the statute. Oh. There are worse things in the world. But in any event, as I was saying, the school committee is the public employer, and whatever authority the school committee has implicit in that authority would be the authority to delegate. In fact, the committee also, as you all are aware, has the authority to hire counsel for collective bargaining purposes, and it all works together to that end.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
I just had a quick question for clarity. So as I understand it, our staff is working under the conditions of the previous contract, it's not that they're working without a contract right now? Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
If there aren't any other comments, if I could ask the mayor to retain the chair so I could speak from the floor? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. The chair would like to recognize Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be brief as well, because we've certainly had this conversation in a number of different ways and at a number of different times. I understand the impetus behind the motion, and I appreciate the thought of trying to change things up, and certainly, we can see how this works moving forward. I do have grave concerns about this body giving up the responsibility for this process. I think that it is something that we are charged with as members of the school committee that we all recognized when we applied for the job, and I think that the whole premise behind it is that, again, as a school committee, we have three jobs. One of the key ones is managing the budget, and over 85% of our budget is determined by our contracts. I think that, as Mr. Leary had stated, yes, and Mr. Mayor as well, we have relied on mediation to bring ourselves to conclusion in our contracts, I think almost exclusively in the years I've been here, and in many cases, they have been hard fought, and that is because you had two, I think, impressive groups working together to really fight for the most solid and positive vision for our district. It was the efforts of the unions and the efforts of this committee and past committees that brought us to this point, and I think that it really was, I don't dispute that it is time consuming, I don't dispute that it is, it is not the fun part of the job, without question. It is a real challenge, it requires time and effort and research, and it is, if nothing, a hard fought process. But personally, I really do believe that that is, I don't know, that is where the honor is, in coming to, in coming to an agreement that is always with the best interest of our children and our entire city at its base. As we move forward, obviously, this is obviously in place, I mean, this is already going on as we have this conversation today, I think in terms of maybe some of the housekeeping issues, understanding how this committee is going to be apprised of progress is very important. Understanding if impasse is reached and the union does file an unfair bargaining claim, which would necessitate mediation, at that point, does this full committee then take once again responsibility for this? Or does this subset of staff continue on in that vein? At what point do we have to reassume responsibility for bringing this contract to completion? So those are some housekeeping issues, I don't know if we have those answers right now, perhaps it's something we'll find out in the upcoming weeks based on the success of this new model, so I'm not looking for specific answers right now, but it is something that I think everyone on this committee needs to be questioning in terms of how we're going to move forward to, again, bring this negotiation to a solid conclusion where both the monetary needs of ourselves and the city are met, and ensuring that the language needs that we have, which are significant in this particular round of bargaining conversations, that we're able to achieve them, because our district is really relying on some significant changes to be able to continue to function at a high level. Thank you. Thank you for listening to me croak like that, I apologize.
Thanks for making it, you know, it sounded fine. Thank you, Ms. Martin. Mr. Gendron?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could, I'd like to just follow up on the question to the solicitor. So, Mr. O'Connor, the, my understanding was that the situation with the school committee was always different than the city situation. The city, clearly, the negotiation was done by the chief executive and the city council ratifies the, or not, doesn't ratify the contract, but on the school side, I thought that state law mandated that school committees do the negotiation, so I guess what you're saying is that that's not the case, that we actually do have the authority to delegate that, however we see fit.
Well, that's right. I mean, the, on the city side, the chief executive officer under a pliny form of government would be the city manager, but that doesn't necessarily require that the manager himself or herself actually conduct the negotiations, it's just that that's where the authority is vested. At that point, the manager, or in this case, the school committee, could then delegate it, and that is apparently what has happened in this case. So it's really a question of where the authority rests, and then what that body or individual vested decides to do with the authority and how they decide to proceed.
Okay, all right, thank you for the clarification. So I must admit that I'm not completely comfortable with the proposal, I can understand the rationale, but I empathize with Ms. Martin's comments, I'm not completely comfortable with taking this particular step. You know, however, I will support the motion. I just want to make it clear that I'm not completely comfortable, because I do agree that trying something new isn't a bad thing, as long as, as Ms. Martin pointed out, we can retain authority in the event that doesn't work out. I also want to address something else, you know, here on the floor, there's sort of been a message put out into the public that we're not doing our job, you know, that we're not trying to negotiate this, and I don't think that's true. I feel like we've worked very hard on many issues, including this one. We've had an offer on the table for months now with the union, we can't talk about the details, but I think we tried to make a fair offer that we could afford within our budget, and the two parties are pretty far apart right now, which is why we took the step already to put this trio together, to go ahead and see if they could make some headway for us, and it hasn't worked. And maybe this step, maybe this change in authority will change that, I hope so, but I am not shying away from this negotiation. I have no problem putting in the time, putting in the effort, putting in the evenings to make it happen, and I want to bring this to a positive conclusion for everybody. Teachers deserve to be treated fairly and well paid, and I believe that completely, but we also have to do so within the constraints of our budget. So I'm going to support the motion, not completely comfortable with taking this step, but as long as, but in the spirit of trying something new and trying to make some headway with a different approach, this is my first time through this particular type of negotiation as well, I'm willing to give it a try, so I'll support the motion in that regard.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Conway, yes.
Thank you. Just very quickly, I think that the points that have been made tonight, I think are extremely extremely important because this is a very complicated situation, very important. And I certainly can understand the hesitation that committee members have. It's been a process that we've worked with. It's been in place for decades and decades. And now, all of a sudden, we're talking about the possibility, or we are talking about changing that. So, I think any time that there's change, needless to say, there is a hesitation, there's a little bit of confusion, and, you know, is it going to work? We, as a couple of my colleagues have already brought this out, the process does work eventually. It just takes a long time for it to happen. And I think that with this process, I think the spirit of the motion is to see if that process can be streamlined and it can work a little bit quicker, just as effective. And I certainly will take a shot at it. I certainly am going to support this motion. And there's a couple of things that I think needs clarification. I think Ms. Martin brought up one of them. The other one that I have a little bit of a concern with, and I'm just wondering what the process would be, because, again, it's very complicated. There are a number of things on both sides. And wondering what is the procedure to get our thoughts and our ideas forward to this group of three? Do we contact the superintendent in regards to this? Would the superintendent be the liaison between the two entities? Does that sound like, maybe through you, Mr. Mayor, to the superintendent? Is that how we're going to work it? Madam Superintendent?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Conway. It's been handled many different ways. The council has been, had an active role in working between entities, but I am more than willing to be the go-between person. I'm also more than willing to set up regular meetings if we need to have check-ins or regular times before or after school committee meetings. However, the wish of the committee, whatever the wish of the committee may be, but I will most assuredly, if that is the will of the committee, for me to be the person
Well, I would-
To be communicating, I will be more than happy to be that.
I would think that the three would sit down and figure out how, if school committee people want to get some information, or their thoughts or ideas, to this group, how is it done in, obviously, a very respectful way, an appropriate way? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Here's Ms. Martin and Mr. Leary. And then Ms. Scott.
If I could, in that same vein, if I guess we really will have to determine how that's going to happen because we're going to, if one member is reaching out with their priorities and another member is reaching out with their priorities, are we then, is the trio of administrators, are they deciding what's most important, depending on which committee member has asked for something? I mean, that seems like a big jump, that we would just give our individual priorities and then let this smaller group that has, now has the authority, but certainly wasn't elected, set the priorities for the negotiations? And I'm going to go out on a limb and think that you and I may have different priorities, Mr. Conway.
Well, I suppose that's possible, but I don't think that's the point. I think that, you know, I think everyone certainly, I feel confident that those three individuals will take suggestions or ideas and certainly try to implement them in probably the most appropriate way. So, I do have confidence in that.
So, if I can, I think that process is the old process. I think what we need to do is empower the three individuals to come and meet with, to meet with the union officials and come up with an agreement. And then typically, what I can just share what happens on the city side is a solicitor will call an executive session, as we do here, to update the committee on the status of it. And I think that is a, and maybe at that executive session, before it's ratified, the committee can express their concern once they, both sides come together with some agreements, if you will. Mr. Leary, and then we got Ms. Scott, and then back to you, Ms. Martin.
To go back to what you were saying earlier to my colleague, Ms. Martin, I think, good questions. I mean, they're solid questions. I agree with you, Mayor, in terms of the process. We shouldn't be contacting the board that we've allowed to begin negotiations. There's several meetings, I believe, I guess there's several meetings that are scheduled. After some of those meetings are done, I think we should have an executive session, get an update, evaluate whether this is a positive, you know, because the goal really is to get to a deal and get to it quicker. If it isn't something that is moving effectively, then we can adjust course. I don't think we need to get lost in the weeds here with the day-to-day meticulous aspect. I think what we need to do is let them have their few meetings, see if the process is better. If it's not, then we simply remove their authority. Ultimately, again, I know where I think it's going, and I've said it already, which I don't think so bad, thank, but I think this is new. Let's give it a shot. Let's see what they can do over the next few meetings and then have an executive session to evaluate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leary.
I was actually, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was actually going to say what you were going to say, is that we should just schedule perhaps like a regular negotiation session after our regular school committee meeting during the negotiations so we can make sure that we're meeting as a group to move forward with discussions. It's a very good point Ms. Martin brought up. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Then I'd just, to wrap up, say that we should anticipate at our next school committee meeting, we should be able to post an executive, that we'll be doing an executive session at the conclusion of that. And during this time period in between, no member of this committee should feel, should be reaching out to any member of that triumvirate to, sorry, to that group of three. It lends itself, you know, to express their individual wishes for the course of negotiations, that we are now, we are out of it and we will only get an update at that next school committee meeting, just so we all understand kind of what the process is in place, that we have no sense of priority setting until the deal is done and then we can, I guess, vote aye or nay at that point.
Further discussion? I think that's the intent, to let the process work, let the parties meet. There are meetings scheduled and then, you know, should there be progress made, then we call the executive session. Certainly, council and, you know, superintendent's staff can poll individuals. Ms. Rossikowitz?
Thank you. So, I do, you know, I've taken everyone's comments into account and I do think it's important that we look at sort of doing things a little bit differently and rather than spinning our wheels for nine, 10 months, meeting week after week. It seems a little counterproductive and very, very time-consuming. I do think that we do need to be meeting regularly, you know, sort of strategizing, you know, the half an hour or so, forty-five minutes after our meetings. That way, we're all here. There's no excuse, you know, we've all dedicated these nights to be here and present for our school committee meeting. So, it was an excellent opportunity for us to, you know, get a progress report and also work out strategy. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to reiterate what Mr. Gendron said. This is not abdicating any responsibility. I'm out seven nights a week and I'm willing to roll up my sleeves any day and I know every single member is here. So, I just, I do want to make that clear. It's not because we don't want to put the time in where we will put the time in, but how productive and how much progress can we make within a reasonable amount of time is the bottom line. So, if there's no further discussion, we'll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Ms. Rossikowitz?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one nay, approved.
Thank you. Moving on to the next motion of the evening, a motion by Ms. Rossikowitz, request superintendent work with MIS personnel to integrate Lowell Public Schools website with the City of Lowell's website. Second by Ms. Scott, Ms. Rossikowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, this came about as I was looking, perusing the City of Lowell's website and had to dig pretty deeply to find a link to Lowell Public Schools, which obviously links to our website. But, you know, there's a lot of important information that we put out on a daily basis that could easily be included in with their information releases, such as, you know, kindergarten enrollment or, you know, any rather pertinent information that the public at whole, or residents in general, could benefit from. So, if that, I'd like to see if that's possible, maybe even coordinating the, you know, or at least meshing the calendar of events. We have a number of workshops that are available to our parents, to our residents, and maybe they're not looking at Lowell Public Schools website, maybe they are looking more generally on the City of Lowell's website. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Rossikowitz, for the discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, that motion carries. Next motion of the evening by Ms. Rossikowitz, again, request superintendent work with the City of Lowell to ensure that the process of snow removal in and around all schools, including the removal of snow from all walkways and traffic lanes, including the enforcement of sidewalks, snow removal ordinance for sidewalks within the vicinity of the schools. Second? Second by Mr. Conway. Ms. Rossikowitz?
Thank you. So, obviously, we've had a really severe snowstorm, snowstorms of recent, which has dumped a lot of snow on us in a very short period of time and has worked all of our crews and everyone's patience to the wire. So, but one of the concerns that I have in, and I'm sure all of my colleagues have, I know all of my colleagues have, is the concern that our kids are walking on, having to walk on the street because our sidewalks aren't taken care of by residents or business owners or property management companies. There are bus stops that are buried in snow. So, as a result, our kids, our high schoolers, for instance, waiting for a city bus to go to school, are having to wait on the street. And that's a real problem. It's a safety issue, never mind every other resident that relies upon public transportation. So, the reason why I bring this forward is really, it's a call to pay attention to the sidewalks that are about your property and really take care of those spaces so that our residents and our students can be safe.
Thank you, Ms. Rossikowitz. Further discussion on this motion? If there's no objection from any colleagues, I'd just like to add a couple of comments because we had two motions last evening of similar nature at the city council meeting. We had the Director of Inspection Services, Eric Slagel, there just to describe the ordinance and, Madam Solicitor, I'm going to put you to work again tonight. But, I mean, the ordinance as written is residents have twelve hours to remove the snow in front of their house sidewalk, whether it's in the front or on the side. And it's a real challenge. I can tell you, we do have volunteers. We have about a hundred junior ROTC, individuals from the high school that have volunteered. We'd love to get more. The challenge is pairing up these individuals in the particular neighborhoods because they can't drive, they have to walk. There is a real need, and more often than not, it's the elderly, our elderly citizens. We have some volunteers at the senior center. We have volunteers, boy scouts. Some churches have offered to volunteer, but it's really just a coordinated effort that the city manager is going to look at more closely and hopefully it'll be managed out of neighborhood services. People need help, then they can call, certainly, there's got to be a priority and our senior citizens are, you know, need help. And some are willing to pay. Sometimes they pay and the snow pushes it back. I mean, it's unprecedented, the snow that we have gotten. So, you know, it's a little bit of cooperation, if you will, from neighbors. I know I do three or four neighbors myself, but it does not mean that we can compromise safety. So, we agree with the motion wholeheartedly. What the manager and I spoke about today and the council last night is looking at the twenty-four districts, school districts, and that certainly should be a priority in terms of snow removal. That's why school is delayed. I can tell you, DPW and our contractors have been working around the clock to remove the snow. It just keeps coming. And it's still coming, again. But I can assure you, they need some rest as well, but we are doing, last night, we closed down the downtown so we can get the equipment in and get it out and still remove the snow. So, I agree with the motion. The superintendent makes that decision. Can, we can't, you know, when the decision, sometimes parents may not understand, the decision to close schools is because of safety issues, that we don't want one child walking in the street getting hit by a bus or commuter. And it's, the roads are very, very narrow, the bus stops aren't shoveled out. So, we will make every effort on the school side. They're going to look at the districts and certainly, I think it's, you know, it's a real-life option to enforce and ensure that these sidewalks are cleared and that's the priority and then, you know, go to other sections of the city. So, I just wanted to add that we, you know, that concern is loud and clear on the city side. It's coordinating the effort of our volunteers with the equipment that we have and a few prayers that it'll stop snowing. So, Ms. Rossikowitz and Mr. Conway.
And not to belabor this, and I fully recognize that there are a number of elderly and disabled homeowners in the city who just don't have the capacity. I know that the Rosebud program has been in place for a number of years and many of our elderly and our disabled residents rely upon the good grace of their neighbors and the kindness of their neighbors. And so, I would just, you know, request that our residents help their neighbors out. And then the other piece too, and I know this because I've been to these people's houses in doing canvassing, you have a number of younger couples in the city that are just not plugged in and have, you know, are not really aware of the ordinances that are in place that says you have to remove that snow within twelve hours after the end of the snowstorm. So, there is that component still and then is that portion that just don't care. And that's where really the enforcement needs to go. Thank you.
Correct. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, this storm was very unique. I mean, we haven't seen something like this in quite a while and it became a Herculean task to try to maintain it. And I can say, the city, they certainly have done an incredible job trying to clear the streets. And I can imagine it must be unbelievable for these people to be out there around the clock. I noticed downtown, right now, much of downtown has been cleared away and certainly makes things a lot easier. The project, I think it was called Project Rosebud, at the high school and the ROTC students would help the elderly and they'd sign up for it, for this service to go out and shovel. The only problem with that is that there are so many more individuals that needed that service and we just don't have those students. So, if there's some way that we can identify that, and also, I think, is what my colleagues mentioned tonight, is that if, for example, I'm sure we all got telephone calls from the police saying that there's a parking ban, you know, maybe at that particular point there can be a reminder that sidewalks need to be cleared off. And I don't think that was said then, but it certainly could be said then by the police, just as a reminder. And I think Ms. Rossikowitz said that some individuals might not know that they have to do that. So, I think that's something that could be very, it could be very helpful.
Yeah, that's a very good point, Mr. Conway. Just to remind, please go out and shovel your sidewalks. It's the city ordinance. That's a good point. Further discussion on this motion? Madam Superintendent?
I just want to take this opportunity to thank your team, Mayor. Miss Manager Murphy, Mr. Snow, my team, yeah, it's funny when you say it out loud, they have done a phenomenal job. Chief Taylor always has said, they, he called me several times saying, "We're working arduously to open on Tuesday. We're really trying." And then it was still snowing at six o'clock. So, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the manager for the amazing communication that we've enjoyed through this really extraordinary winter. Every day that was taken was for the good of safety for kids, but your team was exceptional and continue to be. Living downtown, Mayor, now, amazing difference from yesterday, twenty-four hours ago, to this morning. So, I just wanted to take that opportunity. You have great people working with you and for you.
Well, thank you, Madam Superintendent. I know that you were on the phone and returning my texts and the managers as well with Mr. Lane, just keeping the communication open and trying to get the kids in school and out of the house at the same time. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Next motion of the evening by Ms. Rossikowitz, again, request superintendent provide the committee with a full report regarding those students affected by the elimination of the Alternative Diploma Program at the UTEC United Equality, United Teen Equality Center, excuse me, including but not limited to placement of students in other programs, strategies for keeping affected students engaged to complete their education. Second by Ms. Martin, Ms. Rossikowitz.
I'm going to keep this short. This speaks for-
I'm gonna keep this short. This speaks for itself. You know, Ms. Darkin and I had spoken offline, and this is really just an effort to bring it to our Student Support Services Subcommittee for an update, and then a, a final report to the committee on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross Sikowitz. Further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, that motion carries. Next motion of the evening, again, Ms. Ross Sikowitz. Request superintendent work with the City Lowell to establish the feasibility of utilizing the Lowell Public School parking lots for additional off-street parking for residents in our neighborhoods throughout the city in the event of a severe snow emergency where a street parking is banned. Second by Ms. Scott. Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Thank you. So actually, I had seen this, this, this strategy is used in many other communities, both large and small, where parking is at a premium, short of spending another $50 million bill, billing another parking garage in our downtown. You know, we're really limited in terms of capacity. And more often, when there is a severe storm event, and, you know, there's a, parking, on-street parking is banned, and there is a ton of snow that needs to be removed, chances are, our schools are gonna be closed and our facilities unused. So I wonder if, and it's obviously not suited for every single school that we have in the district, but there are some schools in, say, like South Lowell, that actually have a fair amount of parking available, and would certainly be of benefit to, say, the residents of, of South, of South Lowell neighborhoods. In particular, you know, and I think of, I think of South Lowell and back Central only because the streets are so narrow, and it's very dense, and, and I think it would afford our residents, those residents, an opportunity to remove their cars off the road and eliminate the, the risk of being towed, and, you know, get our streets cleaner faster, and they can get their cars back on the road and lift those bans. I don't know if it's feasible, but I think it's worthy of exploration. Thank you.
Right. I think that's a good point. Just to let folks know, the people were, I'm sorry, Mr. Gendron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Ross Sikowitz is on a roll tonight, just got all these motions lined up. I think it's a great idea. My only concern, maybe you were gonna say the same thing, is obviously, we wanna get our parking lots cleared so we can get the kids back in session in school. So, you know, I think we need to balance that. I think it's a good idea to have, utilize those lots for off-street parking, especially in dense neighborhoods, but we also wanna make sure that we allow the plows to clear the school parking lots so that the kids can get back at school and life can get back to normal. So if we can balance that somehow, I think it's a great idea.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Just one more piece on it, and it really comes down to a question of, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? And so we need to get our sidewalks and our streets clear in order to open back up, open our schools back up. And, and if I'm not mistaken, our schools have sort of been the, the, the last wave of removal, if, right, in these past snowstorms. So, because the focus has been on clearing those emergency routes, clearing the main roads, making sure the roads are wide enough so the traffic can go both ways, and ensuring that a sidewalk is clear leading up to the schools. So by the time that parking ban, I mean, you'd put the same parameters around, say, removing those vehicles off school property as you would for, say, a city parking garage. You know, you have so much time to get your cars removed. So again, it's just, you know, I would just sort of appreciate if, if it was explored in, to be seen if it was feasible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion passes. Next motion of the evening by Mr. Leary. Request superintendent provide the school committee with an updated status and any feedback received from federal and state authority as it relates to our discussion for an increase in funding in order to support our newcomer student programs. Second by Mr. Gendron. Mr. Leary?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I know we had this motion earlier, and I know, Madam Superintendent, you put a lot of correspondence into this, the, the former motion that I put on and the committee supported. I know we also spoke with the, the state delegation regards to priorities. It, it just, it's something that is now becoming, look for the right words, it's, it's financially becoming an unbearable burden. I think that the educators are doing a fantastic job, and, and in order for them to be as successful as they desire to be, we need to be properly funded for it. And we need to probably change tactics more than written correspondence, probably really having contact directly, you know, right with Congresswoman Songus, as well as discussing it with our, our two state, our United States Senators. It seems far-reaching, but this is where it all, you know, the genesis of folks coming in starts with the federal government. You know, when you're speaking of what's the, the, we got 12,500 per student, you're looking at the average costs for, for the newcomers is anywhere between 20,000 to 25,000. You know, it's not that these folks, our educators, aren't up to the task of doing it, they just need more resources. And, and ultimately, they need more human resources, which costs money. And we need, you know, I think we do an excellent job from what all that I've observed. I think our contacts with the different organizations in the City of Lowell is pretty good. I just think the missing, well, there's two things missing. One, the notice, timely notice would be better. Maybe that's something they can't control. I can understand that. But the financing piece, I don't understand. Doesn't make any sense that we're not achieving that financial results. We can do the good work that our folks are doing. We need more teachers to do it. I'm trying to think of when, when we had a, a massive influx, you know, of, of Southeast Asian folks coming to the city, how the federal government came to the table and really provided financial resources to help, you know, achieve some of the results that we're capable of achieving. And I think we need something on that level. It's not, I know we have a lot of issues going on with snow and, and other important issues in the city, but this is now to a point where we're not gonna be successful unless we're able to add actual human teachers to assist in this, in, in our programs. We're not gonna be able to do it, and that's not fair to the people that we're bringing over. It's not fair to other students in our school system, and it's not fair to the folks that are trying to achieve, you know, what they're trying to achieve. So I think we need to really bring them in. I think we can re-align ourselves with other cities that are going through this process. I think that's something we need to do is unite and get that extra funding. I don't know if we're gonna be able to bridge that gap, but anything additional, more than like $400 per student, is, is needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, I, I, I think this is a good motion. The, the numbers, when we're talking about how much money that we're spending, and, and those numbers, I, I've heard those from, from central administration, over $20,000, between 20 and 22, or whatever it is. And, and when we're take, when we're looking at how much money we're spending per student of somewhere in the vicinity of about $13,000, you know, it's, it's a little misleading to the public, because we have, you know, we have over 2,500, we have over 2,500 students that are serviced with special ed, and that brings that number up to about 22,000 or 23,000 per student. Now, compound the financial problem with the newcomers coming over, and obviously, as my colleague said, you know, we're here to educate, and we're trying to do the best job we possibly can. And again, to see what the staff actually does, which I think they do a marvelous job educating the kids. But when you're looking at a reimbursement of just a few hundred dollars versus an additional $6,000 to $7,000 it costs for each one of those students, you do get to the point where you say, how much more can we, how much more can the system actually take before it ends up breaking? And, and I think that this, this motion, I think, is excellent, so that we reach out to the state and to the federal government to say, you know, what do you wanna do with this? And, and I know Madam Superintendent has been extremely frustrated because of the fact that, you know, basically, there's, there's no notice. All of a sudden, she gets a telephone call and said, you know, "You're getting 20 more families or 15 more families." Well, how many children? And then you have to disperse those children throughout the, throughout the schools. So again, I, I, I look forward to seeing what the feedback is on this from, from the federal and the state level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Further discussion on this motion? I, I would just like to say a couple of words. I think this is a good motion. I think it's a very good motion. You know, I, I had filed one a while ago, and we got the information to get a report on the cost. It's the unpredictability, it's the, you know, inability to plan, and the costs associated with it are staggering and significant, and, and the school system can just not handle it anymore without additional financial assistance. So it's a, it's a timely motion as we move into the budget season and, and having discussions with the state. And I think it's something that this school district desperately needs when we're gonna continue, and we're gonna continue to educate these, these youngsters, but we need the resources to do it. So I'm gonna support the motion. Further discussion on this motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion passes. Moving on to Subcommittee reports, we have a report from the Personnel Subcommittee, report of the meeting of Thursday, January 29th, 2015. Madam Chairperson, Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, the packets didn't include the information, so I don't know if we could get that forwarded out, but there were two items that we do need to take action on in a timely way to move forward with the superintendent search, so I will bring them forth tonight. First one, which is obviously critically important, is the discussion of the salary range that we wanna be able to advertise as part of the superintendent search. The recommendation from MASCE, the Mass Association for School Committees, was 175, 175,000 to 200,000. I know we did have some discussion that night about what we would collectively feel comfortable with. I'd put forth, at this point, I'd make a motion for the advertisement to be 175,000 to 200,000 as a range for this position, and I'd welcome any comments from, from my colleagues before we vote.
Motion by Ms. Martin to establish a salary range for the advertisement of the superintendent search from 175,000 to 200,000. Second by Mr. Leary. Ms. Ross Sikowitz? Oh, there was a second. Okay, for discussion, Mr. Conway?
Yeah, just, just very quickly, I, I think that, you know, we, we got something in our packet, and it has the superintendent salaries, and I believe there's, there's over two, there's 201 different towns and cities. And when I took a look at the number of, when I took a look at the number of towns and cities that had over $190,000, I believe there was only 14 of them out of the 201. And when I looked at the per capita income, out of those 14, the per capita income was 51, over 51,000. And if we take a look at our per capita income, it's around $23,000. So there's quite a, there's quite a difference there in the, in the amounts of money. And I, I personally, I, I mean, I think, I agree with the 175, but I think going up to the $200,000 is just, it's, it's, I don't have an appetite for that, to be quite frank with you. I'd feel more comfortable with something like in the 190, 175 to a 190. And, you know, I can't, I can't support the $200,000. Thank you.
Excuse me. Mr., further discussion, Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think, you know, Lowell's the third or fourth largest city in the state of Massachusetts. We have a pretty substantial job here. I think we're kinda splitting hairs on 190 or 200 as the top end of the range, but if MASCE recommends that 175 to 200, I think we should adopt it. It doesn't preclude us from paying 175, if that's what we think that the candidate deserves, but I don't think we should necessarily vary from that. I think that per capita income of the community should not be a measure that we use to determine how much we pay the superintendent. In fact, you could make a case that a lower-income community requires a higher-paid superintendent, because there's a lot more work and a lot more effort that has to go into educating a lower-income population. So I would, I would support the motion and say that we should take MASCE's recommendation.
Further discussion on this? Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one comment. I don't believe Mr. Gendron was at the Subcommittee meeting. The other information that was brought forward is that there were five districts that are larger than Lowell, and the five of them have salaries over 200,000. So we are already, we're District Number Six. I mean, I have no issue at all with going to the $200,000 number. Thank you.
Further discussion on this? I, I just want to express, I have, I, I am concerned with, I understand the recommendation came from MASCE based upon the data and the superintendent and the current status, and we, and we do wanna retract the best candidates, but I think, I have concerns, as I expressed prior, that we're going to be, the base salary of the superintendent is the top salary of the city manager and superintendent of police. So there's always that, you know, we have to be concerned with what this community can afford and how that effect, you know, sort of plays with our assistant superintendents and then our principals. So I think there's that domino effect. So I don't have, I mean, I, I'll, I'll support the motion for the range to attract individuals, but I have no intention of going to a $200,000 range. I, I just think we have to be reasonable, we have to live within our means, and part of that starts at the top. So I, I concur that 175, 2190 is a range, but I, I just wanna make my intentions known on, on that. Further discussion on this motion? Roll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
No.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Ms. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one nay, approved.
Thank you. The other topic for discussion at the Subcommittee was the populating the Citizens Selection Committee, which will be part of our search process. Again, MASCE came forward with a recommendation for, and I'll just kind of rattle off the different categories, three teachers to be part of the screening committee, each representing a level. So one elementary school, one middle school, one high school teacher. The same for parents, looking for one elementary parent, one middle school parent, one high school parent. Looking for two recommend, two individuals representing community-based organizations. Those would be chosen. There will be a focus group, I think it may have been rescheduled with some weather, but there will be a focus group for a number of our different community-based organizations, and from within that group will be selected two, who, two individuals who will be representatives on the selection committee. Also, two community members, just general community members. The process that's been used by MASCE in the past is for individuals in the community who are interested to contact the superintendent's office to express their interest, either via email or by letter. I, I do believe it needs to be in writing, so it wouldn't be, a phone call wouldn't necessarily be adequate, so you'd need to forward that to the superintendent's attention. And the intention at that point is to put all those names in a hat and pick two. I'm gonna let that go for right now. The next member was a student, looking for a high school student to be part of, of the committee, one representative from central administration, and then one representative, one representative principal from the district to be part of the committee. This was the recommendation from MASCE. We did have, again, I think, a bit of a spirited conversation around things. You know, I have concerns, but our, from the very beginning, we had hoped to keep this to a, a, a group that would be kind of able to navigate by keeping it smaller. Under 10 was kind of the initial proposal that MASCE had presented us with. And then as they, I guess, went through the process, they did increase these numbers to a grand total of 13. I think that, you know, that's, it's pretty much the exact same system we used before, so there's not anything, I mean, the representatives that are on here are all pretty much the same as what we've done in the past, so I'm not averse to that. I will say, as anyone who was there knows, the, the idea of picking a name out of a hat, I find just...
Challenging.
Challenging for me. It is a personal challenge for me, Mr. Mayor, but I am willing to let it go, sing the song, and just let it go. So I would put forward to this committee for our approval to move forward with this screening committee, who will serve the purpose of doing the preliminary interviews with our candidates and then recommending to the committee. We have yet to determine the final number, but probably between four and five final candidates that would then be interviewed publicly by this complete entity of the school committee. So that's my motion.
Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikowitz, to proceed with the selection criteria presented to the Subcommittee, knowing that the scenario of the hat will...
Might change.
...come back up for discussion.
Yeah.
Further discussion? All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. And the opposed, that motion carries. Motion to accept a report as report of progress and placed on file by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Gendron. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, that report is accepted and placed on file. So that concludes the Subcommittee report. Moving on to the reports of the superintendent. First report of the evening, we have a dropout prevention and recovery report. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first report...
The first report of the evening is the annual dropout rate report. Assistant Superintendent Janine Durkin has provided us with a longitudinal piece of information about the dropout rate and what has happened. Unfortunately, our dropout rate did increase by 0.8% this year. When you look at the data, it appears that we had 19 less school dropouts this year, in 2013 to 2014, but the increase in the data was at a point when we talked about children who'd already left school. In 2013, 71 children came back, young people came back to a program, whether it be a GED program, and achieved the either high school equivalency by October 1. And in 2014, that number diminished to 31. Overall, the number of dropouts increased to 22 students over, from, I'm sorry, it was 113 in 2014, it was 91 in 2013, which was a total of 22 students more who had happened to not finish school at this particular time. There's all kinds of work that's going on in the state for recovery kind of programs. The work that we've done this particular year is really getting younger, looking at attendance, looking at dropout, which happens at the early stages where we know that's happening. To improve our outcomes, there is a very comprehensive look at increasing, improving the dropout prevention task force. I'm gonna ask Ms. Durkin to fill in the details in these particular areas, as well as looking at attendance as a global occurrence. It just, you do not decide to drop out just in high school. We're looking at a younger age and a more comprehensive plan in that particular area, and as well as other particular look fours at the high school. We're looking at each and every child and how we're tightening that up, so this is not something that occurs again in the future. I will ask Ms. Durkin if she has more details to add to that, and then I welcome any questions or concerns from the committee.
Ms. Durkin?
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. The superintendent provided a good overview for you of the data. At present, we know exactly who those students are. Our records have a little bit of a discrepancy from what we submitted to the state, so we have an inquiry into the state regarding that. The numbers were 113 that came back from the state. When we did our review at the start of the school year, we showed 95 student dropouts, which is still not acceptable, but the number was lower, so we're gonna be looking into that. Also have communicated with the high school, with the Director of Alternative Education, and scheduled a meeting for next week to just really take a good look at the data and look at plans for how, how are they currently re-engaging, working to re-engage youth, and then to put some solid plans in place for a consistent model across the board. As the superintendent mentioned, students don't just decide to drop out in 10th grade or 11th grade. All of the national data on dropout prevention and recovery shows risk factors that span from family issues to students who feel disengaged in their education and don't have a connection to school, to students who are dealing with a number of mental health issues. I'm pleased to say that when you do look at the national research and the most current research that's out, some of the strategies that are in place, many of those strategies are in place here in the city of Lowell, in our own schools, from adult education to social work support for students, to tutoring and tiered interventions. So the one thing that we need to do is to look pre-K through 12 at this, not just at the high school, because, and we know that the work that's going on right now with the newly-established attendance intervention plan, we are seeing some real positive gains, educating families as early as pre-K about the importance of being in school every single day. And so the work, we will, we're working on it now, we will continue to work on it, and we won't stop until we have every student in school every day and no dropouts.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Durkin. Mr. Delary?
Just a quick comment. I think the point you just established, it doesn't start in the high school. I think too often, we put so much money into high school between Read 180 program and other programs because we're not catching it at an earlier date, and you're 100% right. I do like, I think, the first bullet point here about the task force. You think you probably already have that in place. I think your housemasters, yeah, I think your housemasters, though, have done a lot of the data, and I think growing it really down to the entry levels of the program, or if not earlier, is imperative to really have success. One of the things I remember discussing with some of the housemasters regarding mentoring at troubled kids as they come in to the high schools, because we're not gonna be able to, you know, it's gonna take a year or two to unwind some of the thought processes we've had in this program going back to, you know, pre-K. It's gonna take a while to get that to work, but immediately, what are we doing? Do we have type of mentoring shifts for these at-risk kids, assigning different teachers to a different level? I know I talked to, I think it was Housemaster Slattery regarding that program, and thinking about maybe this would be one of the areas you can have a major impact on some of these at-risk students. I'm sure you guys already know who they are, what the specific issues were for each of the 22, as well as every single number. I think you know that very well. The question is, what can we do as a committee to assist you in that? Because I think you're right. I think the overall goal should be 100%. It might not be completely reachable, but we should be striving for that. So I appreciate the analysis. I think we should be talking about it more and looking at different ways of being successful at it. Also, too, to say this, sometimes students fit in better programs besides a high school. So sometimes getting a GED is actually a positive thing, so we should have to look at that as part of, part of that mechanism to fit that student's needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delary. Ms. Durkin?
I just want to follow up with what Mr. Delary spoke to. One of the promising models is that we know that a student is more likely to be, to remain in school if they have that one adult that can provide that additional support or that phone call when they need it to get out of bed and get into school. So that is one of the things that we will be working on and trying to put some structures in place so that we can support, because we know that the list of students, we know them, and so if we know them, then, and we can put people in place to just check in with them on a daily basis, sometimes it's as simple as that. There are other factors that certainly come into play, but that is one of the things that I think is really valuable. The other piece that you alluded to, which is really important to note, is that because we have built many collaborative initiatives with community agencies to support our students, that perhaps they are not graduating from Lowell High School with a Lowell High School diploma, but they are successfully engaged in Job Corps or Youth Build, and so we know those students as well. So it's gonna take us some more work to look at this, but it's definitely something worth continuing our efforts.
Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Ms. Durkin, I'm wondering, how does, how does our dropout rate compare to other urban and larger cities? Is there, are we on par with them, better than them, or where do we stand?
So overall, many of the other larger urban districts, even though, you know, it's reported that their dropout rate has decreased in the past year, their rates are oftentimes, without naming individual districts, but it's all there public on the DESE website, but many of the other larger urban districts have higher dropout rates than we do at this time, even though their numbers may be going down, the dropout rates are higher by a point, sometimes two and three points higher. But there are others, there are a handful that have lower rates.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions, discussion on this item? I just want to add real quick. I, I agree, Ms. Durkin. Lowell, again, is, we are on the forefront when it comes to addressing, you know, issues like this, and having visited the Career Academy and keeping those students in school in a classroom and a learning environment, knowing, you know, the challenges that they face, is really a wonderful public service that we do to, for the people in this community, and speaking to those students and knowing that they're gonna graduate, are they gonna get their GED or get on a career path in life where they could have gone down a very different path, is a very good use of resources in this community. So I just wanted to let you know that, Madam Superintendent. That's a, that's a very good institution.
To expand on that, I think, I touched about, a little about the GED. We sit through, you know, that program every year, and it's a fantastic program. Not every model fits every individual. Do we have, I mean, not to do it today, but at some point, can we look at the students that dropped out, what are their other success stories, did they fit into a different program that benefited their needs so they could get into the labor force? Because again, like, not every child is gonna fit into the programs that are available, the quote-unquote, you know, known programs. And another thing to add, and I'll just leave it at this, like, often kids, they take longer than four years to graduate for a lot of reasons, and I think we should look, I think we do it already. I think we should probably emphasize sometimes it takes five years to graduate high school. And you know what? If that's what you need to do to get that diploma and to get onto that higher education or go in the military or whatever you're gonna do, that's a good thing. Bottom line is that you achieve that bottom line, that result. So I think we should try to explain those numbers, see if we're successful in other areas for these students, and again, always continue to drive the numbers down. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress and placed on file by Mr. Delary, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries, that report is accepted and placed on file. Next report by the superintendent, annual knowledge bowl. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're coming up upon March, and that means we're going to begin our knowledge bowl competition, and so for your knowledge, we have March 2nd and 3rd. That will be the preliminary matches. Everything, again, will be taking place. The Catherine P. Stocklosa Middle School Knowledge Bowl is at the Butler School. The elimination round is March 9th and 10th, which will be the, going to the second part of it. Semi-finals are on March 16th and 17th, and the final match will take place on March 19th. I welcome each of you to sign up. I'm sure Ms. Rochelol's Coordinator of Special Programs has been in touch with you all to be judges through any one of the part of the progress, of the process. I'd like to take one moment to just acknowledge the teaching machine behind our scholars, and those are the coaches in our buildings, Bartlett School, Diane McClain, Melissa Simpson, Butler School, Patty Adams, Amelia Jordan, Jaley School, Cara Miranda, Marcia Downey, the Pine Art School, Michael Nagel and Mary Wood, Robinson School, Justin Sifara and Kim Thimellus, Stocklosa, Linda Almeida and Karen Murphy, Sullivan, Karen Drew and Dion Sanange, and the wing, Karen Cole and Jolene Roy. Our teachers put a lot of work into this, as well as our children. It's fun, please join us.
Motion to accept that report as a report of progress and placed on file by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikowitz. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next report of the evening from the superintendent, city law contributions to support the Lowell Public Schools. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the annual report submitted by Deputy Superintendent Lang, which is detailing the cash and non-cash contributions made by the city over the last five years. I would ask for Mr. Lang to delineate this report as he prepared it.
Thank you, Mr. Lang.
Thank you briefly, and then I'll answer questions, or we could talk about it more fully in a subcommittee if you would like, but I generally track and trend the city Lowell's cash and non-cash contributions to support the schools. I've included the FY '15 budgeted figures at this point. The years right through FY '14 are actual, and those are on file from the, with the DOE. You will see a little later in the packet, it's about an eight or 10-page packet. We did receive the net school spending compliance letter from the state, which indicated that the city did fail to meet its net school spending obligation at the end of '14, but based on the budgeted figures, we'll meet net school spending, which is excellent, in fiscal '15 at the end of the year. So you can see, oftentimes, we get different questions, and I highlighted them in yellow just with regard to what the city's actual cash contribution to the schools is, what the Chapter 70 allocation from the state is, and then the non-cash items. So when you look at the bottom of the report, it's often talked about, what is maintenance of effort and what does count towards net school spending? So we actually have a net school spending agreement with the city, and each of the different items that count, there's obviously backup that I didn't share with you because the report would become too large. You're welcome to come to my office anytime and take a look at it, but on the spreadsheet, it all feeds into the equation that the DOE actually looks at. So we're scheduled for our DOE audit next Tuesday. They'll be in for the week to do that, to verify our compliance statement, but at this point in time, I am happy to report that at the end of '15, the city will have met its net school spending obligation, which is really great news. So happy to answer any questions. If you have them now or at a later time, we could certainly talk about it more in-depth in a subcommittee, but received the information from the DOE, so I wanted to pass that along to you.
Good, thank you, Mr. Lang. Questions on this report? Seeing none, entertain a motion to accept the report as a report of progress and placed on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Delary. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion passes. Next report of the superintendent is timeline on spelling instruction. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In response to a motion by committee member Kimberly Scott, request the superintendent provide a timeline on spelling instruction across the district. I received a report from Assistant Superintendent Abrams, and in the report, it talks about the nature of spelling in Common Core and Writing Workshop, which is words that are related to the reading are definitely capitalized on, and the memorization pieces of spelling is really not what the research is telling us the best way. It's actually usage, so using the spelling to in fact be included into writing is clearly what research is telling us is the best way to do business. Kids need to use the words in context, 10 times if you're a native language speaker, 25 to 40 if you speak English as a second language, and so there's a whole process to that, but words are chosen, it's embedded in literature in a way that's really meaningful. Ms. Abrams, if you want to make more details available to the committee through the report, or if there are any questions, we welcome them.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Questions?
So I will just make a couple of comments about this. The world of curriculum and instruction and assessment is ever-changing. The research, for one thing, comes out, we try it, we see if it works. So along with the Common Core, which is really driving what we need to do in our schools in terms of instruction and content, spelling is one of those areas that, it seems from the latest research, as the superintendent just spoke of, students who are able to use words that they're already using in classroom and learn how to spell those words in the context of what's happening there, seems to be proving to be more successful for students than let, well, I won't say we all, but as I remember being in school, the 25 or 20-word list every Friday, you took it and you did well or whatever. It's a little different now, but it's very different. The way we're even teaching literacy, the way we're teaching mathematics, the way we're teaching science and social studies, everything is different. But the language and the terminology and the words that the students need to learn are critical to those subject areas. So that's the, that's the state of the spelling right now in the district. Again, it's ever-changing, and I will, you know, keep you posted if you have any other questions. I did gather some of this information from our ELA Coordinator, Pre-Cated 4, and this is what the latest research has said.
Thank you, Ms. Abrams. For the discussion, Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question, I guess, would be for Ms. Abrams. This has been brought up time and time again from different parents to me, that they're concerned that it's basically not working, that their children are having a hard time with spelling in the district. Are you familiar in other districts if they have a separate, if it's typical to have a separate spelling program that's embedded? Or, I mean, because it's just been brought up over and over. And I know personally, myself, I mean, I have this concern.
Right. I don't really... I, I don't really know. I'm not going to say I do at this point. Most of what we found out is it's embedded in the work that they're doing, but I could certainly research that and let you know what's happening in other communities. No problem with that.
If you could, if we could bring it back, make a motion to move it to our curriculum subcommittee for further discussion.
Sure, absolutely, that's fine.
Motion by Ms. Scott, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikowitz, to refer this report to, what subcommittee? Curriculum Subcommittee?
Curriculum Subcommittee.
Subcommittee. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries, that report is referred to the curriculum subcommittee. Next report of the evening, further discussion on spelling, timeline and spelling instruction? Okay. Next report from the superintendent, kindergarten registration update. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are welcoming the class of 2029 this year, and so we're very excited. We've made a video today.
I now feel truly old.
Yeah, that's, that's how we, that's how we think in this field. So this is all that's going to happen for the kindergarten registration, the early registration. This piece of paper is being distributed, but we actually made it come alive in a video. All of us have spoken, Mr. Jacoto, Ms. Legasi, principals, and we welcome parents to come to these meetings as well, but you will see something on, on LTC, we're in the Carleen Krieger studio today. I'm doing that welcome piece. So just so you know, this is what's coming, but think about it, you'll blink, they'll be graduating.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to reiterate what the, the superintendent has said, I would so strongly recommend for parents that they take advantage of this opportunity to really see our kindergarten programs, to meet the staff who run them, give their, their kids an opportunity to see our classrooms, to really familiarize themselves with the high quality of our programming. It's a great opportunity to get an introduction to what the Lowell Public Schools have to offer for families, and this is one of the ways we really throw open our doors to, to welcome our community, to see exactly what our schools are all about and the high quality of learning that's happening across our city.
I agree. Further discussion on this report? Motion to accept the report as a report of progress and placed on file by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Gendron. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, report is accepted. Next report of the evening by the superintendent, personnel office update. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, this is a report by Ms. Cassidy, that he provided information that was requested at the subcommittee meeting. Ms. Martin, in her expertise, presented this verbally quite well, but this gives you the first section, which talks about the earnings of the last three superintendent of schools since 2000 through the present, which then gets into the program of what was decided for the search committee recommendation, as Ms. Martin so aptly presented earlier. And then also that was requested that particular evening was a list of the salaries from different communities that Mr. Gilbert provided. So that's the information that was requested from that particular personnel subcommittee.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Questions, issues, discussion on this report? Seeing none, entertain a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Ross Sikowitz, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. That concludes reports from the superintendent for this evening. Next item on the new business, we have a vote to accept the donation from Hitachi Consulting. Questions on this report? I'll just read the memorandum from the superintendent, excuse me, from Deputy Superintendent Mr. Lang to the superintendent. Technology Department recently notified that the Patacaville Memorial Elementary School was selected to receive a Hitachi projector, an installation of a smart board valued at $2,314.72. I've recommended Lowell School Committee vote at the next regularly scheduled meeting of February 4th to accept this donation totaling $23,14.72, and send a letter of acknowledgement and thanks to Hitachi, Hitachi Consulting for their generous contribution. Motion to accept and approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Larry. Roll call.
Ms. Scott? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gendron.
I just had one question. How was it that Patacaville Memorial was selected for this donation? Do we know?
Mr. Lang?
To the best of my knowledge, there was a staff members at the school had applied for some type of a gift or a giving program, and the staff member had been selected to receive the, the whiteboard in, like an in-focus projector type thing.
Sure. Oh, that's great. We should, we should make sure we're on top of all of those types of opportunities, right? Because it's good that we have a staff person who stepped up and did that, but if there are other opportunities out there, it'd be really good to know about them.
Okay, further question? Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Motion was made by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Larry. Roll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
That concludes that section. We'll move on to convention and conference requests. There are seven conferences. Entertained a motion to take all the conference requests together by Ms. Ross Sikowitz, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, that motion carries. Motion to approve the seven requests for conferences from the high school and various schools. Motion by Ms. Ross Sikowitz, seconded by Mr. Conway to approve discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Ms. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
That concludes business before the school committee for the regularly scheduled meeting on February 4th. Entertained a motion to adjourn by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Larry. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, that motion carries. This meeting stands adjourned.